Okay.
Okay, welcome, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Select Board meeting at Kennybunkport. This is a special meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P. M. We're pleased tonight to be joined by the Select Board of Kennybunk, where we will hear jointly a presentation from the Silver Jackets about non-structural floodproofing assessments in both Kennybunk and Kennybunkport. First, just some housekeeping pieces. One for our, do we do this now? Yes, to get it for our board, we are, have one individual on Zoom. That's Alan Daggett. He is suffering in the Grand Caymans. Alan, we, we do need, if you're willing to, as we can hear your voice.
I'm here.
Alan is here, so we are accounted for. So I will then call our Select Board to order, and would ask Miriam if you could do the same for yours.
I'll call the Kennybunk Select Board to order.
Thank you. And let's just take a quick minute to introduce ourselves. We'll just start at the, at the end of the table. Yeah, Kevin Tarian.
Karen Platus.
Lisa Pratt.
Miriam Whitehouse.
David Bancroft.
Sheila Matthews-Bull.
Mary Beth Gilbert.
I'm John Dykstra.
Heather Balser.
Janina Nicholas.
And the other piece on housekeeping is that Lori is not with us tonight. She is attending a board meeting up or down east, as it were. But we do have Heather with us, which is, which is wonderful. All righty, so let's please, as has become our tradition, we will rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and liberty and justice for all.
All righty, and Abby, are you with us?
I am, yes. Can you hear me all right?
Just fine, thank you.
Okay, great. So I am Abby Sherwin. I'm the Resilience Division Director at Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission, or SMPDC, and I am here to give a brief introduction to some folks that are with us tonight from the U. S. Army Corps of Engineers. So SMPDC has worked with the towns of Kennybunkport and Kennybunk on quite a few coastal resilience planning projects in the past. We've done a number of studies looking at the impacts of sea level rise and coastal flooding in both towns. And as a result of some of those planning projects that were initiated in Quebec before two thousand and twenty, I worked with a few staff members from each of the town in two thousand and twenty-one, and there was an expressed interest to build upon the work of some of the sea level rise assessment projects that we had done to better understand flood risk and potential flood risk reduction strategies that could be undertaken, specifically in the Dock Square and Lower Village area. And so town staff and I approached some folks at the state level that are part of what is called the Maine Silver Jackets team. And our guests tonight will go into more detail about what exactly the Silver Jackets team is and does, and who is on that team. But went to that group and basically expressed interest for a project concept that would take a closer look at flood hazards in the Dock Square and Lower Village area, and worked with that team to put together a project proposal that was submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers and was funded and resulted in the project and the report that you will hear about tonight. So with us, from the U. S. Army Corps, is Sheila Warren. I believe she is there in person. She started with the Army Corps in two thousand and nineteen and has worked with six New England State Silver Jackets teams. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in geology from the University of New Hampshire. And then also joining us remotely is Will Weirda, who is a historic architect at the Technical Center of Expertise for the Preservation of Historic Buildings and Structures with the U. S. Army Corps of Engineers in the Seattle District. So I will turn it over to Sheila and Will to give their presentation.
Please, if you would, yeah.
Abby, thank you. That was a wonderful introduction. I sound amazing. Thank you for inviting me and Will to talk to you all about this project that we did. My name, again, as she mentioned, I'm Sheila Warren. I work at the New England District Corps of Engineers, and that's in Concord, Massachusetts. And I'm a native New Englander, grew up in Central Mass, and went to U. N. H., and come to Kennybunk many times because one of my best friends has a house on Fairfield. So I'm up here a lot. I love this place. So anyway, we were very, very excited to be able to do this work for you. As Abby mentioned, part of many of your resiliency planning projects, this was one that she brought up to Nathan Robbins from Maine D. E. P., who is involved with a lot of the resiliency of the D. E. P. side of things for the state of Maine, and together got ahold of the Silver Jackets team and brought this project to us to see if we could get a proposal going, which is what we did. So I'll start with, my name and Will, as, as he mentioned, is from the Seattle District, and he's an expert architect, historic architect. And the Technical Center of Expertise for the Preservation of Historic Buildings and Structures, we just call the C. P. X. That's just, it's easier that way. But we will be using acronyms, and if we use them, and we don't mean to, stop us so that we can be very clear. Also, some of the language, words that we will be using are technical terms, like B. F. E. for base flood elevation and other terms like that. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, so if you're not, let us know, and we'll back up and explain what we're talking about. But next slide, let me explain a little bit about the Silver Jackets teams. This is a, you can go to the next slide if you want.
I'm working on it.
Okay.
Having trouble.
Oh, there it is, okay. So in the Corps of Engineers, there's a number of initiatives to help communities deal with their flood and their flood risk. And so they stood up teams in every single state, and they call them the Silver Jackets teams. And what that means is the state flood hazard mitigation team, either the floodplain manager, who manages the National Flood Insurance Program, N. F. I. P., or the state hazard mitigation officer runs these teams. It's a state-led team and brings the agencies from the state that are involved with flooding. And what the Corps brings is we bring the Corps of Engineers and our expertise, but also the U. S. Geological Survey, the NOAA's National Weather Service, NOAA's Office for Coastal Management. Sometimes the Department of Interiors, N. R. C. S., which is the National Recreation Conservation Service, they're the soils people. Then we bring in E. P. A. if we need to. They're the chemistry and water people. So we combine all the expertise from the agencies. We all meet once every quarter, so you can go to the next slide. And it explains a little bit about, I just explained all that. Next one, sorry. In Maine, these are the lead people for the state of Maine Silver Jackets team. It's led by Sue Baker, who is at the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, D. A. C. F. She runs the National Flood Insurance Program. She's, the term we use is she's the floodplain manager for the state. And in the other team leads that have switched jobs since then, but at the moment, it's the Maine Emergency Management, M. E. M. A., head up by Ann Fuchs. And at the time that this project was put together, with Sam Roy and Heather Dewey, were the hazard mitigation team helping with the either grants or efforts. Both, Sam has moved over to the U. S. G. S., and Heather, I think, is going over to the Park Service. So if you need any questions there, it would be through Annie, and I'll have to get you that detail. Pete Slavinsky is also from Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, but he is in the Maine Geological Survey. Nathan Robbins, who I already mentioned, is in the Department of Environmental Protection for the state of Maine. And there are many others, State D. O. T., others, but those are the main, those are the, when I say Maine, I don't mean the state of Maine. Those are the Maine players in the state of Maine team. It's gonna get, it's gonna get more interesting when I say non-structural structures. So, okay, then we get into the federal side. NOAA's Office for Coastal Management is Jamie Carter. We have, the Weather Service is Sarah Jamison. FEMA has a team member, Chris Marcusich, he comes out of Boston. U. S. G. S. is Greg Stewart, and Greg has now put Sam Roy in his position there. And I bring in others from the agency. So what this does is bring all the agencies together to talk. That's why they called it a Silver Jackets team, because all of us agencies have certain jacket colors that we wear when there's a disaster. So the Corps rings wears red, FEMA wears blue, U. S. G. S. wears green. Silver is, there's no color, and that's why we're all on one team. That's why they call it that. It's kind of hokey, but whatever. So, yeah, next slide, please.
Yeah, I thought it was an age.
I thought it was a fish in the beginning. So, so in Maine, Maine's actually been pretty busy. So we do a lot of these projects. So I'm just gonna talk about a few of them. That's a picture of me and Sue in Belfast at the, at the dock, right near where the canoes are, because they did a high-water mark sign project. And so you can see at the, at my knee is the blue mark, and this is a couple of years ago. So the storm of record was a January of seventeen, nineteen seventy-eight storm, not the blizzard that we hit, that hit Boston, but the one was a January storm. And that's the storm of record as of that date. However, January two thousand and twenty-four, it came up higher. So now that probably needs to be adjusted. But what they did was determine a sea level rise scenario. So that's the green slide sign, and then the red is if it's an extreme sea level rise scenario. So Sue and I would both be swimming during this storm. And this is an initiative that we have, not just in Belfast, but also Portland, York, South Portland, Scarborough, Matthias, Camden, and Rockland. They are, they're getting their signs next year. So we're doing this initiative because it's good education, explaining to people, water is here. Floods are happening. It's not, it's not a phenomenon that happens once every five hundred years. They're happening on tomorrow, I think, is a king tide. So we've got a ten-foot, ten-point-nine-foot tide tomorrow morning. I'm gonna be out here taking a look at it. So, and then also floodproofing buildings. We did a project similar to this in Gardner a number of years ago. And now we have this one here in Kennybunk. We're also finishing projects in Cape Cod and in Rhode Island, because this floodproofing of historic structures is a big issue, because we recognize many of these locations and culture of the, of the history is in the low-lying areas. That's where everybody's settled. And now we have to deal with the fact water's coming, and how can we preserve the history without changing the nature of the building? Or if we do change it, what can we do to minimize that? So that's what this project is all about. And then we also do modeling and mapping tools a lot of times. Those are in the, in the rivers. But in Maine, like I said, Maine's team is very busy. There was a dynamic inundation mapping project that we did in Casco Bay for Portland and South Portland, identifying not just the, just, not just the elevation of water, but what happens when there's wave run-up and where does, where does some of that happen? So they can do more planning, because I think you also know in Portland, over on the backside, what's it, Back Cove, it floods all the time. So they're now making plans and changing zoning so that they will address the issues of the flooding they're doing there. So these are the types of projects Silver Jackets will do. It's a hundred percent federally funded, and we just give you our technical expertise. And so next slide is a few other projects. Many of them, I don't think they're from Maine as much. They're more of the ice jams, typical flooding of the rest of New England, you know? Also, how to, what to do in the middle of a flood, so we've had, we have hazards toolbooks, I mean, toolkits, handbooks, things like that. So next slide. I'm gonna now turn it over to Will, who's on the computer, because he's the expert in terms of the historical architecture and historical nature of the buildings here. And he'll explain the, the project and what we did. I am here for questions if there's more requests for more detail about anything. I also brought the actual report. I've got two copies, one for Kennybunkport, one for Kennybunk. If you want it, we can send it electronically. I'm not sure if Abby sent it. So that's another question. Oh, okay. So, Will, are you there? Can you do your sound check?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. So I'm here for questions.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Thanks, thanks, Will.
That's perfect, yeah. So a little bit about the T. C. X., we are based out of the Seattle District, and we're kind of staffed with Secretary of Interior-qualified architectural historians, historic architects. We're fully reversible. We work kind of nationwide and with multiple federal agencies. So that's kind of a little bit about the T. C. X. If you could go to the next slide. The T. C. X. is supporting the Silver Jackets program and develop non-structural floodproofing measures and cost estimates for eleven structures in the flood hazard areas. All properties surveyed were commercial and represent kind of common building forms of the area in general. And these studies hopefully will create a blueprint for protecting the regions historic buildings in these flood zones. And Kennybunk and Kennybunkport have kind of directly borne the impact of numerous storms over the past century. However, as these storms intensify, the existing historic fabric will need to be, will need to be adapted to these kind of more frequent and more severe storms that are happening, that we are seeing. If you could go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so severe flooding has caused loss of life and property, disrupted communications and municipal services, impeded traffic patterns, damp damage crops, livestock. And Kennybunk and Kennybunkport are vulnerable to this kind of coastal flooding, resulting from storm surges, king tides, which I know Sheila was saying you guys are expecting a king tide tomorrow morning, as well as sea level rise. And it's all due to its proximity to the mouth of the Kennybunkport River, as well as the Atlantic Ocean. And this kind of map on slide right is kind of showing the difference in the two different datums that were used to kind of judge flood impact. So if we look, the two datums, one from twenty-nine and one from eighty-eight, and they're about a seven-to-eight to a fifteen-and-three-quarter-inch difference between the two. So until recently, and this new datum kind of allowed for kind of a larger floodplain. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So kind of as we look at flood risk, these are, this is the flood insurance rate map panel for Kennybunkport. The dark gray shows a special flood hazard area, which consists of A. A. E. V. and V. E.'s FEMA flood zones. And these fall within the one percent A. E. P., which A. E. P. stands for Annual Extidence Probability flood zone, and are considered especially vulnerable to flooding at or above that kind of one-hundred-year floodplain. And kind of as I go into the presentation, if you see something that refers to kind of a one percent A. E. P., that is kind of referring to those kind of one-hundred-year kind of flooding events. And then the cropped image on the right is just kind of showing the Dock Square flood hazard area. And then if we can go to the next slide, is the flood insurance rate panel map for Kennybunk. The gray area shows a special flood area consisting of those flood zones that I had mentioned earlier. The large view shows kind of the impact of the Lower Village neighborhood. And all these kind of sites along the Atlantic coast and the Kennybunk River are gonna be the most vulnerable to coastal floodings. So if we go to the next slide, oh, was there a question or?
No, we're good.
Okay, I will keep going. So these are kind of the study area was defined by the proximity to the Kennybunkport River and the location of the existing Kennybunkport Historic District. If you look on the image on the right, the red lines show what is now the Kennybunkport Historic District. That was from the National Registered Nomination. The orange line delineates the Dock Square Maine neighborhood and area for potential boundary expansion of the Kennybunkport Historic District. And the area in orange is also the most vulnerable to the coastal flooding due to its proximity to, to the river. Let's see, and then the blue icons that we see represent individual structures included on the National Register of Historic Places. The project vicinity has numerous historic resources with varying degrees of historic protections. As we go to the next slide, this kind of shows the historic properties surveyed. So kind of during one of the, during a non-structural floodproofing assessment, each building is inspected to determine what type of measures are appropriate for, for the building, given its use, condition, type of construction, its location within the actual floodplain, the flood characteristics of the area and its inclusion in or its eligibility to the National Register of Historic Places. The inspection process kind of allows the team, that kind of Sheila had mentioned earlier, to evaluate the building's non-structural flood risk and to identify areas of flood risk reduction and consider the applicability of non-structural measures as a potential for risk reduction. So out of the properties surveyed, eleven within that kind of study area were selected based on their vulnerability to flood events, their status as a commercial structure, and their age. And kind of overall, the assessment had two goals. The first was to provide kind of flood risk management methods for the selected historic properties. And the second goal was to provide strategies to reduce the risk of flood damage to structures and their contents. So if we can go to the next slide. So here is a chart that is kind of pulled from the report. So I would kind of like to directly to the report. You kind of want to look at these in kind of more detail. But the historic structures considered for the study area are extremely vulnerable to coastal flooding as climate change brings more severe storms, significant tidal and rising sea level levels. The buildings closest to the river are being inundated with water with increasing frequency, causing significant property damage. And the floodproofing measures are necessary for Kennybunk and Kennybunkport due to the regular flooding from the king tides, seasonal hurricanes, storm surges, and the suggestion for non-structural measures implemented can improve community resiliency, reduce economic losses due to flooding. If we can go to the next slide. So what is kind of non-structural floodproofing? Here you see kind of images of these kind of smaller historic storm doors. But non-structural floodproofing measures are permanent or contingent measures applied to a structure that prevent or provide resistance to damage from flooding. So whereas structural measures are designed, are designed to reduce the probability of flooding, non-structural measures are designed to reduce the consequences of the flooding. So if we can go to the next slide. So kind of types of non-structural, we have two. We have wet floodproofing, which are interventions that allow the water to enter and exit the building as quickly as possible. And then also dry floodproofing measures that stop water from getting actually into the building. If we could go to the next slide. So wet floodproofing allows the water to enter and exit quickly. Some examples of this are floor and foundation vents, subpumps, interior floodwalls, and as well as storm and flood hatches. If you could go to the next slide, please. And then here are some kind of dry floodproofing measures. So storm doors, storm windows, inflatable barriers, waterproof membrane, you know, raising the utilities or raising the actual building itself, or move, moving the building higher ground are all considered kind of non-structural dry floodproofing measures. If we could go to the next, next slide. So kind of during these assessments and as we were looking at these historic buildings, these are kind of some of the areas of focus that we looked at. So looking at the windows, where they're located, if there, there's like a window sill, looking at doors, so storm doors, vents, sandbags, inflatable barriers. So trying to look at not just the building itself, but how can we adapt the outside to kind of aid in flood risk management? And then utilities, especially raising the utilities above the B. F. E. and then basements, storm windows, and subpumps. If we could go to the next slide. And then also, we also looked at, kind of along with wet, wet floodproofing, we also want to look at, you know, kind of what are some good water-resistant materials that can be used? So closed cell and foam insulation really well, pressure-treated and marine-grade plywood, decay-resistant lumber, greenboard, which is kind of a, is a drywall, moisture-resistant drywall, plastic wood and galvanized drywall screws. If we go to the next slide. And then we also looked at kind of, you know, some non-building focus interventions, so adding bio swales, permeable pavers, creating kind of parks in low areas if that's possible. But, you know, kind of, and all these things kind of allow for the ease of the floodwaters. So if you go to the next slide. So kind of as we were looking at the buildings, we developed these kind of summary of options. So the study area has, you know, very specific and unique requirements to consider prior to the implementation of any sort of non-structural floodproofing. And these areas include kind of the timber frame structures that are elevated on piers, and some of them are physically kind of leaning on each other. So as we kind of looked at these options, we kind of give them a good, better, best in terms of their reduction in flood risk. So option one, being the good, would be hatches and utility elevations. And the hatches are intended to reduce the water pressure under the floor during the flood events. So it allows the water to kind of come into the building and then receive with the floodwaters. And adding, and raising the utilities above the B. F. E., and I believe Maine requires a B. F. E. plus two, or B. F. E. plus four. And raising the utilities allow for, after the flood, allow for kind of quick actions. And then option two, being the better, hatches and then floodproof materials below the B. F. E. plus two feet. And then the best option would be the elevation and utilities of the actual building. So kind of as we look, the neighbors have high level of structural density and are vulnerable to flooding, especially with these elevations. So buildings sharing party walls are often both more challenging and more expensive to elevate just because it requires, can require multiple property owners in multiple buildings. And elevating buildings with shared party walls, such as the building in Dock Square, would require that kind of close coordination and agreement among the property owners, as well as kind of, you know, if there's any sort of shared financial or liability associated with it. So option three's contingency pricing usually provides for a lot of that uncertainty. And kind of as a result of, and as we were going through these options, you know, the cost is gonna be significantly higher in option three than option one or two. So if we go to the next slide. And due to a lot of the constraints of the buildings, a lot of the recommended proposed measures involve kind of those flood hatches and then adding flood-resistant material to the ground floor, as well as elevating the utilities. And I think, you know, property owners considering any sort of limitation of these measures, you know, should consider consulting with municipal planning offices and professional architects and engineering firms to kind of further investigate the structural feasibility of these options. So if you can go to the next slide. And both of these tables, this one and the one on the previous slide, are both within the report. So kind of as we were looking at hatches and the number of hatches, based on the square footage, we were able to kind of come up with some kind of rough, some rough number of the required hatches with, at this kind of twenty-four-by-thirty-six-inch square size to help really alleviate the flood risk. If you could go to the next slide. So the cost of all these non-structural measures vary by the size of the building and the number of hatches that are required, as well as the and the number of hatches that are required, as well as the label and materials required, um, to substitute the building materials below the BFE with those that are, you know, flood, more flood damage resistant or more water resistant. And the cost effectiveness is really kind of determined by the way the project's benefits against the implementation costs. So the benefits in this case would be the reduced dam- damages that result from the insulation of these non-structural members and the costs are those approved to implement the non-structural members. Uh, so if you go to the next slide, please. Uh, you can see here, here is kind of a chart, um, that lists out the floodproofing measure and then the cost and the cost plus cont- tendency, uh, to do something like that. So these are kind of rough, rough estimates, but then can probably use kind of to give a general cost to other buildings, um, in the area. If you could go to the next slide, please. And then we've really kind of focused on one building as kind of an economic to, uh, to dive deeper into the dollars of what these projects can kind of take. Um, and this property, um, on Dock Square was chosen due to its potential suitability for kind of all three measures that were considered within the assessment. So wet floodproofing with the construction of hatches in the floor, use of flood material, flood resistant materials below the BFE and the elevation of the utilities. So the three options and there are some serious scope of work were developed into a cost estimate to determine the economic feasibility of the proposed non-structural floodproofing measures for the subject building. And then on the slide, you can see kind of the cost of the options one, two and three, those kind of good, better, best options. And then within the report, there's kind of, uh, if you could go to the next slide, please, sorry. And then within the report, there's kind of this detailed kind of scope of work for all, um, options one, two and three. So option one being the hatches and utility elevation being the most kind of cost effective. Um, and then the better would be kind of replacing those, uh, materials with more kind of floodproof materials. Uh, if you could, uh, go to the next slide. Um, this is just kind of like a continuation, um, where our cost estimate are really kind of called out and putting as much detail as possible kind of into these, um, these tables. If you go to the next slide, please. And that's just kind of the finish of the table and then, uh, one more. So I, I think kind of with this report, you know, it really kind of, you know, you really to kind of come up with a plan, um, and understanding kind of the areas of impact of the flood, um, you know, understanding the historic and anticipated conditions, uh, the character defining features as well as kind of the wet and dry floodproofing measures, um, that are possible. Uh, if you could go to the next slide. Uh, these are some kind of resources that we kind of quickly pulled together and, um, I would kind of like to open it up to any questions or comments or.
I have a quick question. Um, so the flood hatches, I'm not quite sure how that works in our dock square. So if I think back at the January thirteenth storm, we had surrounding water all over the place. So very similar down like at the west end of our Goose Rocks Beach. You know, if people were pumping out of their basements, they were pumping out and the water was coming back in. So I can understand on like a rainfall or a river flow in, but when you have the wave of water that came in, literally we're sitting in water. So what does a hatch do?
Um, Will, I'll jump in on that. Um, it, their, their pressure from the water outside the building can force it to collapse. So it allows the water to go in and out, so it's not causing that kind of pressure on the structure. So that's one piece that it does.
Well, the flow through, I understand.
Yep.
So that, no, the flow through was the flow through. The hatch was within a building.
Coming up. So it, so rather than lifting the, if you could imagine the water coming up.
So you're, you're allowing the water to come up versus into the building.
All over your floor.
You're flooding the building.
Correct.
Okay.
But you're not causing more pressure on the structure itself because you're letting the hatch release that pressure. Cause water itself, the water pressure can cause substantial damage. Regardless of doing damage to the materials, it can move it, it can pick it up.
And so then once you let the water come into the building.
Then it let, let it drain. And when you decide to do that kind of measure, you provide yourself with the area that it's going to get flooded, materials that are water resistant or waterproof.
And you have.
So you don't destroy it.
And you have to correct the sloping within the building so everything drains. So you can't have any impingement point or any building wall or anything that will trap.
I think that's where our study will give you the idea to look at this as an option and then you hire, uh, very expertise consultants that understand the dynamic of the kind of flooding that happens here and what you can do for that specific building. You've got wooden buildings here, they behave differently than brick or mortar buildings. And so many of the long-term, you know, the, the non-structural style that, you know, when you're talking about in general, they don't usually see a, a community that is on a dock, the way that Dock Square is built. And that's why we thought that this would be an option to release pressure, at least so that your buildings aren't potentially floating away. They haven't yet, they're pretty well built.
Actually, they did.
Oh, they did?
It did shift.
Oh, okay.
The January storm.
So, so Will, you don't, I don't know if you're aware, there was a severe storm with a hot, um, astronomical high tide with the sh- with the wind just happened to hit it the right way. Maine got nailed and so I think your water came up to twelve point something feet elevation. It could have been.
Portland was, Portland was fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So you, if you can imagine, Will, some of these, that, that, that building that you did the further assessment, which is hurricanes, I think it was up to their waist. And I was in there in the spring and they still weren't cleaned out yet.
Yeah.
So, um, anyway, but that's your question and that's where our piece would give an idea of what you could do and then to go forward would be a professional engineer locally that can help you sort out all these questions that you have. I can't answer all of them, I'm, I'm just a geologist. But good question, yes, did that kind of help?
Yeah, I guess I'm just, like, I just read the report and if you said to me, you know, write some things that would help, I would have wrote down stuff that's in the report. So I think I was waiting for like the aha, specifically for our buildings. And it seems like it's more like this is things that work generally everywhere. And then if we want some more specifics, it's what you said, we'd have to go specifically for our own architecture. What would we really need specifically?
So Will, you can jump in on this. When we looked at the structures here, what we found around, in, not the general answer, but specific would be the hatches, right, Will? I'll let you, um, jump on that about specifically what works here, go ahead, Will.
Yeah, um, kind of based on the buildings that were, um, identified. Um, those were kind of, kind of the best floodproofing measures, uh, that we came up with kind of based on their location in that Dock Square area.
But it's a lot more than hatches. I mean, we had the submerged electrical, you're going to have to lift all the electrical above. You have to lift all your sewer pieces above.
Correct, the, um, yeah, raising the utilities is part of that, kind of that, um, it involves the hatches as well as raising the utilities.
And rebuild the floors and the walls to something that can get flooded every, twice a year. I mean, that's the point, it's getting to be twice a year in some of these places, so that's.
I think it's going to be more than that.
And I think that's where you see a lot of the cost benefit of kind of adding these floodproof or water resistant materials, at least, you know, three, four feet up the wall, is going to save you kind of cost, um, if, you know, since it's flooding like two times a year.
So that's where I, I think I go back to like where, you know, we've, I know Kennybunk, we've had this conversation, uh, and I know you guys are, you know, um, you know, s- sorting through where you're going to go with your plans and stuff. But I think this is where, you know, to, to look at the buildings this way, um, and still recognize you're going to get water in and you're going to get material that's better for water, but it's still water.
Right.
Um, that, you know, we were, some of us were getting to the point where we were looking for those options. So I understand these are the non.
Non-structural. No, in, in the, in the hydraulic hydrologic term, non-structural means you're not stopping the water. You're letting the water flow, you're not, you're not building a structure to stop it.
Right.
So that's, these are non-structural options.
Yeah, so that's where I think I go to, um, like if we start putting money into something, I go to the structural things. I want to start looking at ways that we can stop because I think this is good, but we, we still have water in and also I'm thinking about, this is letting the water in, it's trying to equilibrate the forces outside, inside. Um, but like what we saw this past storm, you know, um, we watched water push at, at probably, I think if we were, if we were doing that flow rates of that water pushing in, that was huge. I mean, that was, it was moving boulders.
Mm-hmm.
Right, granite boulders across, literally across the street. It pulled up pavement and moved it. So I get the point about hatches, but then I, I still go back to if we're looking for things that are gonna really help us secure our towns for another fifty to a hundred years. You know, we've, we've got to try to stop the water in general. Is that, uh, when you're working with towns and stuff, are people getting to that conclusion on coastal towns? Or do they feel that they can do these, this type of non-structural stuff?
Um, that's a question for, um, the, maybe Abby can answer that from some of the other towns that are around here. Um, this flooding is not unique to Kennybunk and Kennybunkport, Maine. Um, there's, in some cases, the Corps of Engineers built some jetties and some flood walls and, and as we, they age and we see what happens as the forces of nature continue to hit something that was physically put there by man, it will destroy it and maybe destroy other things around it. So that's not always an option anymore because the, the actual construction of something may, may not meet what you are looking for and may undermine other potential locations. I'm not saying that's what's happening here, but, um, in, let's see, in the other coastal towns, it, it varies. I think everybody is struggling with how to deal with water. And also I think you may know, um, and this is where the experts on the team help so much, that the Gulf of Maine is, sea level rise is higher here and the Gulf is warming more than anywhere else in the Atlantic Ocean because of just the way the currents are. So you're actually seeing more movement and height than other parts of the Atlantic Ocean. You're seeing it more here. And that's at, adding to the distress of the fact the water keeps coming. And these structures are on a dock and so it's difficult, um, to elevate. It would be diff- even moving the utilities, some of the structures are very small, second story. Um, and it, but I'm not answering your question, but I'm just a- agreeing with you that these are really big challenges.
Yeah, and I think that's actually, you know, I mean, just listening to you, I think that was, that was interest, you know, just your, your thought process there was interesting because, um, part, part of when you're talking, um, you know, there is that part of retreat, right? Um, so if a, if we can't stop the water, um, then, you know, then I think, I think this is understanding the, the non-structural part. But to me, this is, uh, for something that if we had a one-off, uh, you know, every ten, twenty years or something, you know, versus if we're going to start seeing things, you know, at the level that we've experienced over the last couple of years.
Syndemic.
Then that's a different thing, you know. So I, I think this is, it's, it's, it's very good information. I think it's, it's an interesting one about where the thought process is about, at what point are we, what point on that continuum are we trying to solve, right? Is it stopping?
And it might get to a point where, you know, elevating the actual buildings, you know, start to make kind of more sense as we see more storm water rise and these more severe storm events.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think for Dock Square, we have, we have three options. We can stop the water, we can elevate the buildings, or we retreat. I, I don't, you know, the mid- middle things are going to be, are going to be kind of tough, I, I think. Uh, hatches are, are lovely for, and frequently, but we.
Right, but it's happening, it's happening potentially once every couple of months. Water, at least an inch is coming in. Maybe not up to your waist, but.
Yeah.
Um, and, and also if you look at Route Nine, West Street, the bridge, how much higher is that from the actual doorstep?
Yeah.
Right at, at where the theater, I think, I don't know it's there now, but that was the old theater.
That was the old theater, yeah, shops.
And you're looking at an elevation that the state DOT put, um, the, um, bridge to, so that it wouldn't get washed out.
No, it was, it's a lake on both sides. The bridge doesn't get washed out, but it will soon.
Right.
It's a good sized log.
It might last another fifty years.
Depends on how big the boat is that hits it.
Well, thank God the one is on land now.
But you're right, these are really big challenges. And the Corps of Engineers in our study does, does not answer all your questions for that. Uh, that needs, this is a start for something to potentially start to plan.
Yeah, I think it, I think it, I think it gives us a framework and it gives us some cost, but I, I would be hesitant on signing up for these because I don't think it solves the problem that we're trying to solve in general. But I think it's a good, it's, it's good information to be able to bucket that and say this is an option. And then the next issue is, you know, but it's, thank you. Thank you for answering the questions, Stu.
Um, I was just curious where you listed the good, better, best options that on, that for the most part you, you went in with the middle of the road better.
Right.
And I, I was curious why that was your recommendation versus the best.
In the, go ahead, Will, you answer that one.
Yeah, um, so, uh, one of the, the reason why we favored option two compared to option three was just a lot of the, um, the challenges with raising buildings in the Dock Square area where you have a lot of sharing walls or buildings are really, really close together. So that could involve like, if one property owner decided to elevate, it could adversely affect his two neighbors if they are somehow kind of structurally connected or leaning up to each other.
They are.
Um, so that's kind of, we thought kind of that added complication and that added price. Um, when you look at the individual buildings itself, um, kind of option two kind of becomes a better fit.
And also, Will didn't mention this, I think part of it was, this is a historic community and the, and this landscape and the streetscape without elevating stays in the way that it looked. So you have that still, that streetscape and elevating can change that streetscape in a way that some may or may not like in terms of the historical side, right, Will?
Yeah, uh, you know, elevating, you're, you're saving the buildings, but, um, you're potentially losing a lot of its sense of place and what makes it special.
Which is your other challenge is how to.
Every building is raised thirteen feet, you also have to think that there's, you know, a staircase to every entrance, so it certainly would change, um, the feeling of Dock Square.
Got to stop the water.
I have a question. The, um, the flood, uh, levels that you were talking about, um, are, I can't remember the.
The ba- base flood elevation.
Elevation, yeah, plus one or plus four or whatever it is. Um, one, what were those based on the hundred year level of like right now? Or is it going to be, you know, how long are these going to last, twenty years?
Okay, so when we did this study, we started in twenty twenty-one during COVID or just near the end of COVID. And I don't think the new floodplain maps were available. Sue Baker did say, um, you need to put in the newer floodplain maps because they might give you a different elevation. And so we're going to address that in the report. We, we came to see you to also find out what else you want us to change in the report, so we can, uh, address all your questions.
Unfortunately, you'll find a two-foot difference between Kennybunk and Kennybunkport. So that's going to be kind of interesting.
Yes.
Yeah, the Lomar went in, unfortunately, in my opinion, and lowered us to a, a ten-foot instead of a twelve-foot. Yeah.
Okay, so, but yes, that needs to be, um, edited and put in as additional information. Because at the time we did the study, um, and did this, this part of the report, that's the information we had. And then subject matter experts that did the cost and the engineering piece, we, it was difficult to get them because I think you have the same problem everywhere. It's hard to get subject matter experts to come and work for the government. So that took a while to get the team together and it, it was an extra year. We couldn't believe how long it took. And so by the time they got it, that report had been written, we were just waiting for the costs. And so it was old information, which Sue brought up immediately. So she's very. So she's very good.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there could be a further study, just to look more closely at what the options are on the elevation piece. I know that the Pilot House, when it was redone, was, had a twelve-foot.
Right.
Requirement and that, I think the flooding this last time came right up to the doorstep, but no further. So having the, having the setting at the right height and then requirements for elevation, at least on rebuilding, places where it makes sense.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure what the, what it might look like for Dock Square, uh, but, you know, there's, there's some incredible ideas that might be out there in terms of how that could be formulated to look right and still elevate the buildings on the pylons to a height that would protect them. I mean, I mean, you're from Seattle, right? I mean, Pioneer Square, that's what, twelve feet above the original Seattle? Something like that? So a lot of things.
I think at least.
Right, so a lot of, a lot of towns have been elevated where the water's been, or they were built at a low level and they've been elevated. So what that might look like for us, I don't know. Certainly, I'm not looking for something of that scale, but something that we could do that would make it look right.
Um, another thing we can do is share the reports that we're doing for Rhode Island and for, um.
That'd be very helpful.
Massachusetts because the planners in, um, Province Town have already seen some of their buildings elevate, some of them are not. They're the ones most worried about the streetscape. And Will has come up with some doc, some diagrams of what it could look like in P-Town. Um, we haven't gotten that far yet with, um, the work in Newport, but there's three towns in, in Rhode Island and three towns in Massachusetts and the two towns here. And maybe we can take a look at what we suggested there. It's different materials, different property, but it potentially give you some other ideas too, so I'll definitely follow up on that.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Yes, sir.
Real quick question. Um, and it just, as I stop and think about elevating Dock Square, one of the problems, yeah, one of the big, one of the big problems is if you get to like Allison's and some of those buildings and those are built on, as, as you brought up, old piers.
On a dock.
So not only do you have to dismantle that in the process of trying to do it, but also trying to find ledge underneath it to put the pipes in that you're gonna be driving this, lifting this thing up with. I would think that this, and it, it, not to mention, as he said, that several issues with almost joined walls and, and, and those sorts of things. I would think that's gonna be very challenging.
It is, they, actually, when they looked at hurricanes for the actual building to be elevated, in the actual reports, lots of risks because it's a, a larger footprint. It's very difficult to elevate this style of build and the, um, the wooden structure. Um, it, there's many challenges. That's why our study had to end because we're only as, we, we can't spend a million dollars on this study for you. Yet that's when you have to go find the experts locally that can actually help you with those specific challenges and, and they're big ones, so.
Thank you very much.
So I, we have given you our presentation. I'm going to email, um, the documents. I'm very easy to find, and so please reach out and let me or Abby know if you have more questions. I'm going to fix the flood map, I'm gonna do an addendum on that, um, other questions that you might have about how we made, what decision. Um, this is like a fire hose coming at you about really specific historical, structural stuff that you may or may not have a lot of knowledge in, some of it you might absorb and ask more questions. I'm only an hour and a half away and I'll be glad to come back up here and come and talk to you guys anytime you need it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I suggest we take a, a small break. We'll just take a, uh, I'm sorry.
Kennybunk needs to.
Oh, indeed. Mary, if you'd be willing to close.
All right, uh, we'll close the Kennybunk Select Board portion of the meeting and let you guys get on to rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And again, we'll just take a, a ten-minute break.
Five minutes.
Uh, do you, you guys, can you please vote to adjourn for the minute?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor.
Aye. We are adjourned, right?
Okay. We can, we can take right now.